Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 20, 2021. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next item is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with one modification, to remove item number one to our next, and we'll move it to another meeting, future meeting.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer, to adopt this evening's agenda, striking item one. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that agenda is adopted. And that moves us to, then our first item then is to approve the minutes of the April 6 city council meeting.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move approval of the minutes from April 6.
Second.
Motion by Demmer and a second by Carlson. Discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And I got one, I should have one subvention, right? Councilmember Johnson?
Oh, I can abstain from that. Yep.
Yep. Okay. All right. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to approve a Class A on sale and Sunday liquor license for the Rose Garden, 1925 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The owner, Zin Hau Long of Rose Garden located at 1925 Coon Rapids Boulevard, has submitted an application for a Class A on sale and Sunday liquor license. The license and investigation fees have been paid. The police department is conducting the background investigation as required by the city's code. A certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage has been received. An approval of the license would be conditioned upon a successful background investigation and the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division's approval. So we're looking to approve issuance of a Class A on sale and Sunday liquor license to Rose Garden Event Center LLC, doing business as Rose Garden located at, should be 1925 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest contingent upon the completion of successful background investigation and the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division's approval. Should actually make that subject to them opening up for lunch again. We really missed that spot. They got food to go, which is nice. The next item on our consent agenda is just strictly an informational item. There was a corporate officer change at Texas Roadhouse, 2780 Main Street Northwest. And then the final item on our consent agenda is to ratify a temporary liquor license expansion that was administratively approved by staff. In an attempt to assist businesses impacted by COVID-19 restrictions, staff created a temporary outdoor dining policy which provides the guidelines under which our liquor license holders can expand their premises. Staff has verified that all requirements have been met and approved temporary expansion for the following location until October 31, 2021, or unless ended earlier by action of the city council or upon termination of the city's state of emergency declared on March 17, 2020. And that is for Leonard's Bar and Grill at, I'm going to guess, 2501 Coon Rapids Boulevard? Seem to have an extra number there. So we're looking to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor license premises as outlined above through October 31, 2021, or unless ended earlier by action of the city council or upon termination of the city's state of emergency declared on March 17, 2020. And that is our consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer and a second by Carlson. Any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is adopted. We are up to item six on this evening's agenda, which is to consider Resolution 21-1/9, awarding a contract for street reconstruction project 21-1. And this is for about three miles of residential streets. And I believe these are the ones up in the, kind of the oaks of Shenandoah. Yeah, kind of between Shenandoah Boulevard and Hanson Boulevard, south of 131st. And, oh, and the Bluebird Circle off 121st. So does anybody need any presentation on that, or questions, or?
Ah, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 21-1/9, awarding a contract to New Look Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $3,309,825.50.
Second.
Motion by Demmer and a second by Geisler. Discussion? Got some tight bidding on that one. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item seven on this evening's agenda is very similar. It's to consider Resolution 21-2/9, awarding a contract for street construction, sorry, street reconstruction project 21-2. And this is about 3.6 miles. And these are all down in the area of Coon Rapids Boulevard, kind of north and south of the tracks, east and west of Egress. And then there's a little, and then the section over east of Foley Boulevard, between Foley and Highway 10, north of Coon Rapids Boulevard, with 3.6 miles there. And anybody have any questions or need any of the presentation, or?
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 21-2/9, awarding contract to Northdale Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $5,389,912.91.
Second.
Motion by Demmer and a second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is to consider Resolution 21-3/9, awarding a contract for miscellaneous trail reconstruction. And the reason we can kind of roll through these fairly quickly is we've already had the presentation from Public Works as to the scope of the work. So if anybody has any questions about that, go back to an earlier council meeting and you'll see the scope of the work. And this one is for a trail at Riverdale Park, approximately .3 miles, and 950 feet of trail at Thorpe Park.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-3/9, awarding a contract to North Valley Incorporated in the amount of $96,376.65 for the 2021 miscellaneous trail improvement project.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And item nine is to consider a contract award for the 2021 street maintenance program, project 21-5. Mr. Himmer, or Mr. Stemwell, who wants to hit the highlights on this one?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I can certainly touch on that. We actually have multiple contracts to be awarded under this item. It's the city's annual street maintenance program. It's a consortium of kind of north metro cities primarily, but it does capture a few outside of this general region. So we're looking tonight to discuss seal coating, crack sealing, pavement markings. We broke fog sealing into both streets and trails and parking lots because what we found is sometimes contractors get better pricing on one versus the other. And it became a little bit of an issue last year for us. So with that said, we received some good bids as well. We have award to Pearson Brothers for the seal coating in the amount of $852,886.40. Actually, I'll take that back. We had one city withdraw completely from all of these projects. So while the bids came in at 852, 88640, the city of Anoka is saying they're not doing any street maintenance this year. So all of these bid numbers you see are reduced proportionately because we've got the ability to cancel certain quantities. So we're looking to award for the seal coating to Pearson Brothers Incorporated for $815,786.40. For the pavement markings, we're looking to award to Sir Lines a Lot, and that's in the amount of $193,993. We're also looking to award the fog sealing of streets to Allied Blacktop in the amount of $185,886.90. Allied Blacktop also for the trails and parking lot fog sealing in the amount of $42,734.64. And finally, with the crack sealing, got a little bit of additional information for you. We had a low bidder Northwest Asphalt Maintenance at $484,901.56. As part of our due diligence that we do on all projects, we consulted with our member cities as well as other reference checks. There was a letter issued to the contractor shortly after bids were open, expressing our belief that they would be a non-responsive bidder. That's based upon our interactions with them. Mine personally, as an administrator of this contract for all the other cities, as well as a breakdown from some of our other member cities, as well as our consultant that does, prepares, helps us prepare specs, does inspections for us and other cities. So I believe there was some supplemental information handed out to you. So as part of those reference checks, we found a lot of difficulty adhering to schedule, which is extremely important for these because all of these contracts we're talking about, they all interrelate with one another. You can't do the fog sealing until the crack sealing is complete. So not only do you have multiple contractors relying on an accurate schedule, but you've got multiple cities relying on that as well. So these contractors are moving a lot. It's not an easy task, that's for sure. And we just had quite a few issues last year that came about. So based upon those reference checks, we're looking to award to the lowest responsible bidder, and that would be Allied Blacktop, in the amount of $488,715.42. I believe I touched on everything. I'm more than happy to stand for any questions council may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Himmer.
Couple additional information on that.
Chris Brody.
I'll remember one. I believe the attorney is on the Zoom call, just for your reference. They did submit a letter from Larkin and Hoffmann on behalf of Northwest Asphalt and Maintenance. We're just going to be asking that be included as part of the official record tonight. Mr. Himmer referenced a couple of documents that were submitted to you. That was the summary of the reference checks that were performed. And we got responses from Hanover, Columbia Heights, obviously ourselves, East Bethel, Monta Bidi, and then our consultant, WSB. That was the basis for the letter that we sent out, which obviously we believe that there was issues regarding communication and poor performance and unprofessional actions and those things. And that's where the basis for that came in, into our conclusion, or into our recommendation that they're not the lowest responsible bidder. And again, that's the key here, the lowest responsible bidder. It's not just the low bid, because obviously they're the low bid, but they're not the lowest responsible. And council does have a reasonable, does have, you know, is able to use some rational basis for that. And you have reasonable discretion with that. And you can consider things outside of price, especially when I note the price difference with $600 here. I think we have an obligation. I mean, what the lowest bidder is to get the, you know, to get the, be financially responsible to the, to our residents. And what that lowest responsible bidder includes all of those factors. And we also, in this case, we're also looking out for the residents of other cities as well. So, and then finally, I just wanted to add one little piece, is we did submit a updated resolution with respect to that particular contract that does discuss, would omit in the, in the findings that therefore is to be resolved, that we, that you guys, if you so choose, find them that they're not the low bid, and find Allied in fact is the lowest bid, or lowest responsible bid. So again, if you have any questions for myself or Mr. Himmer, we're more than happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you.
Otherwise, I would just ask that you take these each one by one.
Okay. Oh, so take one, each one, line by line. Okay. All right. Very good. Yeah. And I think with letters, we're responsible to the rest of the consortium. And if we have letters from them as well, we have to, we have to be responsive to that.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
I can take the first one.
Perfect.
I make a motion on Resolution 21-5/9A, awarding a contract to Pearson Brothers Incorporated for patuminous seal coating in the base bid amount of $815,786.40, and the alternate amount of $815,786.40.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Those are the same dollars, but, those are the same dollars as I read them.
The base and the alternate are the same.
The base and the alternate are the same, so I think we can just go with the one number.
Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Did I understand you saying that the reason for the reduction is Anoka decided not to do any street maintenance this year?
That's correct.
You just wanted to say that, didn't you?
I did. Especially since my children go to St. Stephen's, and I think I need a new suspension on my truck after driving into town. So, okay. Jeff Weaver, fix your roads.
Unfair.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Councilmember Demmer.
Move Resolution Number 21-5/9B, awarding a contract to Sir Lines a Lot Incorporated for pavement markings in the amount of $193,993.00.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Griscoviac. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
In Resolution Number 21-5/9C, we have our updated resolution to award the contract to Allied Blacktop Company for crack sealing in the amount of $488,715.42.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Griscoviac. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just reiterate what you had said at the start. We have an obligation to our citizens. We have an obligation to our workers in our, you know, for our public works team, as well as all of our other consortium cities, to make the right choice. And based on the feedback that was provided to us, I'm comfortable with this decision.
Concur. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We're on to item four.
Ah, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move Resolution Number 21-5/9D, awarding a contract to Allied Blacktop Company for fog sealing streets in the amount of $185,886.90.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
And make a motion for Resolution Number 21-5/9E, awarding a contract to Allied Blacktop Company for fog sealing trails and park, parking lots, in the amount of $42,734.64.
Second.
Motion by Geisler. We'll give that one to Carlson. Second by Carlson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 10, which is to consider Planning Case 21-7, consider adoption of ordinance 2244, changing zoning from low-density residential two to moderate-density residential 12691 Hanson Boulevard. Anybody need Mr. Fernillius to go over this again, or we need any more information on this one?
Ah, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I feel like we had a pretty robust discussion, so I'm perfectly happy moving it. I guess we can have further discussion after motion. But in Planning Case 21-7, move that city council approve ordinance 2244, approving the proposed zoning change from moderate-density residential, based on the stated proposed zoning to moderate-density residential is consistent with the proposed land use designation of moderate-density residential, that the proposed rezoning is compatible with the adjacent land uses and zoning, and that the proposed zone change would not have an adverse impact on the area as this area is predominantly zoned as PUD with townhomes as the use.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Just to make the point that you made a little bit earlier about, you know, we're going to approve this, but we did have a really robust discussion in our last council meeting, a discussion, a really good presentation. So I'm looking forward to approving this.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider Resolution 21-13/8, accepting plans and specifications for the East Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements and authorize solicitation of bids. Mr. Himmer, you want me to read the discussion point here, or you?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I can touch on it briefly. We did a similar improvement at our West Treatment Plant last year. So we've got some boiler improvements that need, some controls, some improvements to the ventilation system for our chlorine room. So it's really just getting us up to speed on a lot of those items. So funds were put into the budget for this year to perform that. And we're excited to get out for bid and see what kind of numbers we get on this project as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler.
I will make a motion. We adopt Resolution 21-13/8, accepting plans and specifications for the East Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements and authorize the solicitation of bids.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
I pointed this out last time, too, but I'd just like to point out that, you know, we're doing things like this and making these investments in these infrastructure projects all the time. It's one of the more important things that we do on the city council. And I'm just grateful for the city staff and the council that we're being so proactive.
Agreed. Hear, hear. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to item 12, to consider Resolution 21-51, reallocating the 2020 general fund budget and amending the 2020 and 2021 budgets. Mr. Stemwell, or Ms. Hanson?
To Francine. Yes. Mr. Mayor, counsel, this resolution is to reappropriate budget in the general fund according to our administrative order that states that no activity can have a negative budget to actual balance. There was enough excess budget in other activities to cover these shortages in the other activities. So that's good. So we are net positive in the general fund. Plus, it also includes one additional carryforward of $6,000 to 2021 for the additional purchases of IP phones for our IT department.
All right. Anybody have any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson.
I move that we adopt Resolution 21-51, reallocating the 2020 general fund budget and amending the 2020 and 2021 budgets.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Ah, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer first.
Just because I'm making sure I'm reading it right, the last whereas says some 2019 budget items will not be purchased until 2020. Was that supposed to be 2020 and 2021? Or was that saying we're doing a carryforward because things moved around?
Thanks for noting that. No, I'm sorry. That was a typo. It should have been moved.
Okay. I would have believed it either way, so.
I'll have that corrected before it's signed.
Okay.
Councilmember Geisler, was that your thing, or did you have something else?
No, I was just going to say, you know, it's, it's kind of that annual re-leveling of the budget. So if anybody's wondering what we're doing, you know, it's just, you know, where you've got little budgets within, you know, departments within departments. And if one is high and one is low, we just level those out to just kind of keep all the accounting, even for the year. So, general housekeeping.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And I think we're on to a little bit more of the leveling. Consider Resolution 21-52, authorizing the transfer of funds. Ms. Hanson?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is again, one of our annual resolutions that comes to council. It's for you to authorize the transfer, transfers that we're doing that will appear in our 2020 financial reports. In the general fund, we have a transfer of $350,000 to our retirement insurance fund. This is to make whole our health insurance benefits for our qualified retired police and firefighters. This year, we're asking to transfer $750,000 to our facility construction fund from the general fund. Based on our 2020 financial results, there are sufficient funds available in the general fund to transfer this money to the facility fund. And this will help to finance our future facility improvements that is projected for our city's capital improvement plan. This is a little unique this year because we usually maintain a 45% fund balance in our general fund and transfer everything over to the facility construction fund. This year, because of the additional money we received in the CARES Act, we opted to only transfer the $750,000 that would help us with our capital improvement fund, plan and facilities. And we have kept an additional $3.2 million over our 45% fund balance in the general fund. So now our fund balance is at 55.7% at the end of 2020. And this money will be at council and staff's discretion as to how we want to spend it moving forward to the best interest of the city. So we decided to just leave it in the general fund moving forward now into 2021. So that's a little bit off of what we normally do, but we felt it was the most accountable way to account for those CARES Act dollars that we received from the federal government. We have again our annual transfer to the compensated absences fund. This year, we had to allocate $359,045 in order to cover the balances of our unused sick and vacation leave for our city employees. In 2020, this was a 7.5% increase over our 2019 amount that we needed to fund. And this is mostly because, yes, we have cost of living increases, but this year was unique. 2020 was unique. A lot of our staff was unable to take vacations because of the coronavirus restrictions. And so a lot of people ended up carrying over their full amount that was allotted to them into, into 2021, or we did see, even if they weren't maxed out, in addition to what people normally carried forward, to which we think is reasonable for the situation that happened in 2020 with the virus. So we ask that that transfer be approved. The next one is again, an annual transfer we do for the lodging tax and the senior program fund to help fund, pay for administrative needs, that the general fund assists to administer the lodging tax and our senior program. And there is enough fund balance. We zero out the lodging tax and the senior program fund has enough fund balance to sustain this transfer this year. This year, we only had a transfer other than the general fund, again, to cover the compensated absences of $12,212, to cover the need in our public communications fund and our HRA capital fund, again, for the employees that have additional vacation and sick leave carryforwards there. So I think that covers it for this year. Answer any questions, if you have any.
Mr. Stemwell, did you have a question?
I do not have a question. I was just going to bring a couple of other points with regard to the typical transfer to facilities construction. As Fran mentioned, due to the CARES Act, we have a significantly larger amount sitting in general fund than would be required by our fund balance policy. As part of our budget planning for this year, that question, that conversation would come back to city council, how to utilize those dollars, with the goal of sort of co-planning that with the new round of stimulus money that's going to be coming to us starting in June. And so we'll have those dollars to figure out in terms of utilization. And then by the end of 2021, you know, we should make some determinations and not necessarily just leave those dollars sitting in fund balance and find some purpose for them. The second thing was. The second thing was with regard to compensated absences, just that, as Fran mentioned, we had a lot of folks, employees who didn't utilize vacation time like they typically would have, and so, you know, if they're someone who maybe would use a lot of that time, maybe they carried over their maximum allotment instead of being at 40 hours or 60 hours, they were up at 160. But I think it's important to note that we didn't increase the maximum carryovers for employees, they were as they normally were, and we encourage people to use the time that they could use, so that we limited the amount that we would have to transfer over to this fund, because that was a part of the conversation toward the end of the year, and we thought it was important to kind of hold those thresholds where they were, to not further create a new liability for the city moving forward. I anticipate vacation use will get back to closer to normal in 2021, so hopefully, due to that, there won't be as much of a need to transfer to cover that liability going forward, but, you know, sort of at the whim of what's going on in the world right now.
Yeah, with airfares, I've already taken more vacation this year than, you know.
That too.
Councilmember Demmer?
Any concerns people are going to take twice as much vacation this year and that we're going to have trouble staffing things?
Mayor, Council, I don't really don't have that concern, no. I mean, in the end, because they, they sort of are going to end up with the, you know, vacation time they otherwise would have, and so that hasn't been a problem yet through April, perhaps during the summer, which is usually the tougher season for staffing, that's something that the management team will have to keep an eye on, but we'll certainly cover what we need to.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I'm going to move adoption of Resolution 21-52, authorizing the transfer of funds that's described in the report.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I do appreciate, Mr. Stemwell, the, the conversation about the vacation time and how this has been a bit of a different year for people, but, you know, I speak it also as a, as a separate government employee who also hasn't had a vacation in a year and a half because of COVID and because of the added responsibilities on my family as a result of distance learning and everything, and it's similar to what the people who work for the city of Coon Rapids have experienced. It's been a hard year for me and my family, it's been a hard year, and I can see it because I have many friends who work for the city of Coon Rapids, on Coon Rapids employees, and, well, I understand for budgeting purposes, the need to kind of keep maximums at maximums and stuff like that, I really want to encourage city staff and the employees of Coon Rapids to find ways to use their vacation, it's there for a reason, and, and it, it really promotes a strong and healthy morale in the city, I think we have a good one. I commend all of you for how you've responded to the pandemic, and I frankly think that this city has been far out and in front of and ahead of other cities, but when I see stuff like this in the, in the budget, I just want to use this as an opportunity to create a reminder that City Council, and in particular myself, are really aware of the sacrifices made and the need for people to take their vacation and be with their family.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and Council, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Johnson's sentiments on that topic, certainly we want people to use the time they have available for lots of different reasons, including mental health, I mean, it's, it's important for people to get away from work and the stresses that lie therein. I will mention as well, that last year, at the start of the pandemic, we did create an 80-hour leave bank for COVID-related issues, whether that is you needed care, or you yourself got sick, or you had appointments or things that were, you know, for testing and so forth, and that leave bank carried over into 2021. It was actually created before the federal government created their programs, and we've continued those hours on into 21. You know, a lot of people have utilized those banks for those purposes, and then, once they're depleted, you know, they're kind of back to traditional sick leave incentive, but that was really effective in sort of addressing the influx and need and creating some flexibility, especially in the spring and the summertime when the pandemic was just starting, we weren't really sure, we were, we had people working different shifts and rotating in fewer hours, and we were able to lean on that COVID bank for assistance, so that was really helpful.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider planning case 21-6, consider adoption of Resolution 21-53, changing the land use designation from institutional to moderate-density residential 12691. This is sort of catching up with our earlier action here. Anything that you feel you need to go over, Mr. Fernilias, or I think we pretty well got her last time? Anybody have any questions of them? Who are you pointing at?
Our Mr. Harlecker is here too.
Oh. Mr. Harlecker, anything you feel like you have to go over?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of them?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
All right. You say government's inefficient, and we have to review two resolutions for the exact same thing, but I know their zoning and land use are somehow different, so. In planning case 21-6, move approval of Resolution 21-53, approving the proposed land use amendment from institutional to moderate-density residential based on the stated findings that, I'm looking to see if I have to read. As stated.
As stated. Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Again, the same, we covered this pretty good in our last meeting, but just for anyone watching, these are, these changes are necessary before anything goes to the planning commission, before any site plan is developed, or it comes before planning commission or the council, so we'll see this again as this site develops.
Yeah, yeah, and that's an important distinction, that if anybody's really interested in following this parcel, pay attention to the planning commission, we still have to go through site development and all of that, and you'll have an opportunity for input at those planning commission meetings on that. Or write to city council members, you know, or call us. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 15, consider a development agreement with Centra North LLC, Port Riverwalk Third Edition. The city's housing and redevelopment authority sold the Port Riverwalk redevelopment site to an affiliate of Centra Homes in February 2020 for construction of a 136-unit detached townhome development, and the council prelim, the council approved a preliminary plat for the entire development in 2019. In 2019 and 2020, the council approved final plats and development agreements for the 29-unit First Edition and 42-unit Second Edition. The council approved a final plat for the 15-unit Third Edition in March 2021. It is now asked to consider a development agreement for that phase of the project. The remainder of the project is expected to be platted in one or two additional phases because installation of public infrastructure for the overall project is largely compete, complete, the basic terms of the Third Edition Development Agreement are much simpler than those of the First and Second Edition Agreements, and the developer will be responsible for constructing the improvements for this edition, which include private streets and associated utilities, signage, sidewalks, trails, and landscaping. The agreement requires that all developer-installed improvements are complete by June 30th, 2022, except for landscaping within stormwater facilities, which must be installed by June 30th, 2023. Mr. Fernilias, is there anything you want to add to that? Nothing. You wrote a very complete description. All right, council, do you need anything from anyone, or?
Mr. Mayor? I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement with Centra North LLC.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Griscoviac. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. How many more additions will there be?
Three.
We'll see, when we get there, huh? All right, we are at the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address the City Council under open mic, public comment? Open mic, probably nobody on the Zoom, all right. Okay, well, I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. Go ahead, Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, Council, I just have one item, and it's related to next week's Board of Local Appeal and Equalization Meeting, which is a separate board but comprised of the City Council, and it's an opportunity for property owners to enter, or to contest their property appraisal, which was mailed out about a month ago, but I would strongly encourage anybody who has questions or concerns about that to contact our assessing department, because nine times out of 10, they're able to explain the situation, provide some data, some reference to why your property value is what it is, perhaps even visit your property to view any concerns that you might have about why or why not the, the appraisal is accurate, but if, at that point, you still feel that it isn't accurate, you have the opportunity to appeal, appeal that before the board for additional process, so, that meeting will take place here, it will be in a hybrid format, so if someone doesn't want to come in person but still would like to contest that, they are able to do that remotely via Zoom, and that link will be sent out as part of the agenda packet on Friday afternoon.
Yeah, but that, that really is key, though, if you, if you want to contest your value, call, contact the assessor's office first, because if you just show up that night, we can still do it, but we don't have any information, and the assessor can, like you said, can normally say, well, this is why it is, and normally they go, oh, okay.
Yep.
So, Councilmember Demmer, I'm sure.
No, I just want to remind people too, that when you get your tax value, like, you know, the end of the year, start of the year, that's based on this assessment now. So a lot of people get their taxes in the mail, and then they come and say, why am I being taxed so much? And we say, because of the assessment in the summer, so this is the time, this is what sets your taxes in motion, so pay attention to it, because, while things like assessment don't, you know, really look as important as things like taxes, this is when it gets set.
That's a really important distinction. So that card that came about a month ago giving you your value establishes your taxes that you're going to pay in 2022, so if that's, if you want to contest that value, now is the time, next year's too late. Yeah, okay. Any other business? How'd we do with the cruise, chief? Any ideas?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think some stats were forwarded to the council, but yeah, it was busy, the officers were active, doing the best they can to regulate traffic and to address the parking issues that came up, so I know they're busy, so.
I got my first complaint from Champlin. Got a letter from a guy five blocks the other side of the river complaining about the noise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tell him to call his city council.
All right, any other business to come before council this evening?
I think a motion to adjourn, Your Honor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Johnson to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.